And stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the June 10th meeting of the County Commission. I remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the black folder. If you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he can help you with a listening device. Okay. Routine business. Item one, consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the June 3rd, 2014 County Commission minutes and June 6th, 2014 Canvas Board minutes.
Do we have a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second to approve both sets. Any other additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three, your bills to be paid in the amount of $533,693.33.
Pay the bills.
A motion to pay the bills. Motion and a second. Are there any comments on the bills? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item four, reports. The juvenile detention center statistics from May 2014 has been received and that is placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel actions. A, consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Motion for routine action.
Move for approval. Second.
A motion and a second to approve routine action. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item six, there are no application for amendments today. Item seven, notices and requests. A, notice from the South Dakota Board on geographic names of public comment period on proposed name for an unnamed creek in Minnehaha County near Valley Springs. Two names proposed, Annie Anderson Creek and Manning Creek. The Board seeks comments in support of either proposed name or any additional proposed names. And item B, notice from the South Dakota Board on geographic names of public comment period on proposed name for an unnamed island in the Big Sioux River in Minnehaha County near Dell Rapids. One name is proposed is Quarry Island. The Board seeks comments in support of the proposed name or any additional proposed names.
I just want to make a comment that we, the Commission did comment several months back on and send a letter in support of one of the names. So, we've already addressed that, but that is now open to the public.
Eight planning and zoning notices, there are none today. Number nine is a petition for a compromise of lien. Ken, are you doing the briefing?
Ken. Okay. Mr. Wilken, just identify yourself.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. I'm Andrew Wilken, Associate with Wilken and Welter. I'm here on behalf of a client, Brian Barnes, in hopes to request a compromise for County aid lien. Right now, he has a total, I think, I've noticed from the minutes of 6,700 some odd dollars of lien. He has a $10,000 personal injury settlement that's on the table right now, which would currently put him at negative $4,000 still owing. We're asking that you would accept a $1,000 payment in exchange in compromise for a full release of the remaining amount of the lien. And if that's not acceptable, in the alternative to accept a $1,000 payment and release the lien as, just in regards to the settlement.
Are there any questions for Mr. Wilken? Commissioner Kelly?
What are the ages of the two girls that they're supporting?
One is, I believe, 16 and the other 14. Now, Mr. Barnes, I met with him last night and he mentioned a third dependent, but I don't see that listed on his tax return. And he didn't give me a name or age because I was in passing as he was signing the documents that he needed to sign.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Just point of information, you don't need to use the applicant's name on this, so.
Okay.
But I have a question for Robert Wilson when he's done.
Robert.
Robert, I noticed that the income tax that we, form that we got, did not have the earned income amount or the refund amount on it, which sometimes can be a significant amount. And I guess it would be important to me to see that. That said, I think that it is very kind of the law firm to bring this forward to us at this time because I'm not sure every law firm goes out of their way to help, help us collect some of the money owed us. And so, I'll make a motion to accept the $1,000 just in regards to the settlement.
I have a motion to accept the $1,000 in regards to the settlement. That would leave the remainder of the lien in place.
Yes, ma'am.
But release it in respects to this settlement. Do I have a second?
I'll second for conversation.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Benega.
I'm still questioning the tax return. And I did notice too, that the two dependents, it doesn't show any of the other schedules. It just shows the cover sheet, so to speak.
Yes.
Do you have any of that information with you?
I do not. I have his social security benefit statement or the like.
Just speak into the microphone, please.
I have his social security benefit statement and that's his only form of income if the Board would like, would like that document.
No, I don't need it. Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
Was there any earned income credit?
No, you're not. No, Commissioner. I apologize.
He probably liked that.
I guess I don't understand why we didn't get the full income tax return.
Any other questions? Robert, do you have any comments on that?
Commissioners, I would just note that I, I had the same question that I noticed when we received the packet of information. It had the single tax return on there and I, as you mentioned, that it was, I was interested in that because there, oftentimes, there may be a earned income credit or something else on that. But I, but I was providing the information that was provided in totality to our office with the application.
Any other questions or comments? Is the applicant present?
He is not today. He was planning on it, but he called my office yesterday and said he was going to be unavailable. So he came down and signed papers because we, the Board, requested a petition with his signature instead of just mine, signed on his behalf.
And they don't have to appear. We just usually ask if they are here. Commissioner Benega?
I think I'd like to make a motion to defer this for a week until we get the total application completed. I would second that.
I have a motion and a second to defer for one week for completion of the application.
Specifically, Mr. Wilken, if we could, if we could just get the, the schedules that were attached to the tax return, that would be extremely important.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I think that would be a substitute motion, but I'll withdraw my motion.
Sorry.
So we withdrew the first motion and the new motion on the table is to defer for one week to get additional information. Everyone understand? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is a time when you may speak on anything that is not on the agenda and ask you to please try to limit your time to five minutes. I'm not going to hold you to that. It is not. The Commission does not have to comment since this is public comment, but if they would like to respond to you, they can. So, is there anyone that would like to speak at public comment? Good morning and if you'd identify yourself and your address.
My name is Lois Boyce. I live with my husband, Dwayne, at 26575 East Shore Place, Hartford, South Dakota. That's out at Wall Lake and we've owned that property for 20 years. I've made a script of my comments to keep them short and precise. In April, we received notice of a public hearing from the Minnehaha County of Planning and Zoning regarding a conditional use permit that would allow an accessory building to be built at 26269 Park Place that was larger than zoning allowed. We did not have an issue with that. What we did have a problem with was that the map that was enclosed with the notice showed East Shore Place and Park Place terminating at the boundary of that property. And I, I'll show that. I also have a copy of my comments here for you if you want because there's quite a bit of detail involved.
Okay.
Would you like that?
Yeah, Robert can give them to her.
Okay. The two access roads to that side of Wall Lake are Park Place, that's the one on the south, which is used by four property owners, and Wall Lake Place feeding into East Shore Place, which is used by five times as many, or 20-plus property owners. We attended the meeting on April 28th and spoke with the petitioner about the fact that the road was not evident on the map that was provided. His response to us was that he liked his privacy. And when the time came for comments, we mentioned the fact that the road was not shown on the map and were told that the Office of Planning and Zoning would look into it. Later that, that week, I went to Minnehaha County Register of Deeds office and with the help of an employee there, research was done on the Park Place address. Using the card catalog, the large record books and the computer, we were able to find the 1954 survey map of tracks 14 to 27 of Bowman's subdivision of part of Lot 7. I have a copy of that there. And that's also in your package. I know those numbers are hard to see from where I'm standing. The property in question is tract 22 and the north half.
Can you pinpoint where she's, what she's talking about?
Tract 22 is right. And track, and the north half of tract 23. Our property are tracts 14 and 15, which are the first two. The survey shows a 20-foot wide private access road extending from lots 13 to lot 25 that was to be maintained by the owners. This road was maintained, as you see, for some time, as I've been told that a school bus used to travel through there to pick up children. However, at some point in time, the previous owners of 26269 Park Place put up a temporary barricade consisting of two steel fence posts with a chain or rope between them that blocked access, though I assume it could have been taken down in an emergency. Because the road was no longer used, vegetation began to take over and now there is a section of fence there that completely blocks access. This has created a serious situation. Several times a week, large garbage trucks have to either back in or out of the area. A truck delivering a load of gravel recently did damage to property because they were backing down the road. And last week, we watched a pickup with a 24-foot trailer attached attempting to deliver a dock on East Shore Place. And emergency vehicles would have difficulty gaining access and the list of safety issues is endless. I took a copy of the survey to the Office of Planning and Zoning and they put a note on it to call the owner. Last Friday, we were at the Office of Planning and Zoning to pursue another matter and asked about the outcome of the phone call that had been made. We were told that the owner had said that he was not interested in having the road there. And the zoning employee seemed to believe that it was his prerogative since he owns the property on both sides of the road. I responded that there were four other property owners along that road who had property on both sides. And using that theory, any of them could reasonably close the road if they liked their privacy and were not interested in having traffic go past. I am also aware that those property owners would tell you they have no intention of blocking access, but on the other hand, some of them strongly support the right of the current property owner to do that very thing. We asked what recourse was available to us and we were told to come here today. A few hours later, after returning home, we were confronted by several of our neighbors. One, a county employee, and the other who is married to a county employee. They said they had received emails and phone calls from county officials and/or employees letting them know we were attempting to have the access restored. It became very apparent then that someone with a lot of power and authority wanted access limited. And we realized that some of our neighbors and even some county employees could be intimidated to the point that they would not care to be involved in this discussion. We understand the fear of consequences may limit the possibility of a positive outcome for us. It's very disturbing to us that the accessibility and safety of a neighborhood can be marginalized by someone in a position of power. But we have witnessed others accepting the fact that laws can be ignored because of possible retribution from persons of influence who have something to gain. Do you have any questions?
I think this is a time for public comment and it's not an agenda item, so if anyone wants to comment or, does anyone have any comments?
Is, is this a private matter or is this a, I mean, is this like covenant? Is it, is it not per vio of us or is it in fact something we have to deal with?
Kirsten.
The road is a, what, easement?
Without knowing more about this, is it your understanding, ma'am, that this road is, is allowed access by easement or is it by a prior conveyance?
As you see.
Pardon?
When the original plot was drawn and filed with the county, there was a road.
I, I understand that, but is your right to use it by easement or what other right?
Right, by easement.
I.
Can we have someone make comment? The gentleman is nodding his head.
And I guess generally, before we get the answer, I would say what it sounds like to me is one private landowner is having a dispute with another private landowner over private rights that have been arranged by contract here. And I'm not sure the Planning and Zoning Department or the County for that matter has a role in, in defining what those rights are as to a private road. I mean, this is not a public road. I think that's a clear distinction here.
Whenever we, whenever we try to get a building or some type of structure, we follow the setback rules that the county provides along that road. Even though it's a private road, we have to follow all of the rules and regulations of the county regarding setbacks and all of those details.
I think that maybe we could talk to Planning and see, you know, what kind of clarification we can get from them. But since this isn't an agenda item, I think we're just to leave it at that. Kirsten, you got any other comments?
You can ask any questions you'd like on a public comment, you know, period, but that's up to you guys as the Commission. If you want to take other public comments, that's fine too.
Well, if, could we then keep her informed of what?
Of what we find out.
In fact, if it is a private matter, it's just not, it's not our issue. But to measure your montags, if, if it's a road of some sort, then, then we do have that. But I think we need to keep her informed of what.
And we have.
You have to make sure you get her name and address.
Yeah, we do. Cindy's got a name and address for the record. Did you want to say something? You'll have to identify yourself, sorry.
My name is Dwayne Boyce. I'm Lois's husband. To me, the issue isn't anything to do with anything other than safety. If a fire truck answers a call and manages to get in there, no ambulance, no personnel, emergency personnel will be able to access that area because it'll be blocked. Furthermore, we have had cases where there's been five deputies pull up to a house, the road is totally blocked, we had to walk around because there's no way to get to our place. That's happened in the recent past. And I am concerned for public safety. There's people that say, well, our grandchildren play in that area, we don't want people coming through. Their grandchildren, get five and six of them piled on a golf cart and drive up and down the road carelessly. That's their idea of a private road. And it's not for play, it's not for personal, it's for safety. And if, if 911 and emergency personnel have no interest in this, I would be very, very surprised.
Thank you. Any other comments? This is public comment, so if you'd like to make a comment, you identify yourself and.
My name is Art Umland. I live at 46274 Park Place. And my home was completed in 1977, so I've lived there ever since. I've known the people, I was, there's the easement that covers our access to the four houses that are up there. I was one of the signers on that and stuff. There was no written documentation prior to that time. And so, to make things as they should be, as time went along, the four landowners that were involved, we signed an easement, you know, had it established legally and it specifies then that, that particular Wall Lake, that our access in there is shared by the four people. We take care of all the maintenance. And then from a historical perspective too, the lot that's most in question as far as actually being crossed, where it's on the cross now, over to Barney Benson owned when I first arrived there, he sold the piece of property where I built my house and stuff. And knowing Barney Benson and then the other people that were there at the time, such as Elmer Gasky, who had been there a long time also, there was no established road through there. And, and had there been, then it would have had to get treated in the same fashion, I would think. Our access, there'd be no reason for us to have a separate access designated for us to get up and down there, you know, an easement, I should say. As far as I know, there is and has not been any traffic on a regular basis up and down that road. And, and this is just personal comment from myself, less than Connie Fioc, the current owners that have taken over Barney Benson's spot there. Running that on through there would make a considerable difference in that property and its value to them and stuff. And it would cut in half that property that they paid a reasonable sum for to get on a lakefront and stuff would be greatly changed by doing this. And I think that should be taken into consideration. But as far as there being any regular road up there, any maintenance for it by anybody else, it didn't happen.
Thank you. Did you want to comment, sir?
I'm Wayne Schnabel. I live at 26583 East Shore Place. I am right at the end of the road and basically, they talked about 20 homes out there. Well, 10 of them, the road curves to the south and the other 10, the road curves up to the north. So there's really only 10 homes down in that area. When it comes to safety, I have three grandchildren that are seven and under. We don't have golf carts, we don't have whatever running around. But I'm concerned about that being open and the amount of traffic coming through for the safety of my grandkids. I can't replace them. If my house burns down, I can replace that. So, I don't understand. I've seen the garbage cups, trucks come down, they pull in, back up and go into my driveway and drive out. So I'd like to see it stay the way it is.
Thank you.
My name's Rhonda Milstead and I live on Park Place. And I actually brought that agreement for you to keep as long as you have some other papers.
Okay.
But this is, it isn't a road. We keep calling it a road and it's not a road. It's a mutual driveway easement that those four homeowners agreed to, to give them access to the property. That's all it is. So I would like to leave this with you as well and hope that this, I mean, it is private. It's private land that these homeowners turned into an easement. That's all it is. It's never been defined as a road. So I'll give that to you.
Thank you. I'll give it to Cindy. Thank you. Are there any other comments on that issue? Yep.
My name is Les Fiyok. Along with my wife Connie and I, we own the property that's in question here. I would like to correct, the address is 46269 Park Place. I've had a private discussion with Mr. Boyce. I told him in a case of emergency, I have no problem with a fire truck or ambulance going through that property. It is not a roadway. However, my feeling is it's a convenience factor for Mr. and Mrs. Boyce and we're not turning that into a public thoroughfare. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments on that issue? Any questions or comments from the Commission? I'd just say, maybe we could have our planning and look at this and maybe our attorney can look at it to see what our response would be to that. If there's anything, we can get back to you. Okay? Thank you for your public comment. Is there any other public comments on another subject? Good morning. Robert? Yeah?
My name is Teresa Staley. I'm at 1621 South Van Epps Avenue here in Sioux Falls. And I'm here today to talk to you about our election last week. I was a superintendent at St. Mark's Lutheran and first of all, I want to say that Bob Litz has been very helpful and easy to work with and affirming. So this isn't, I'm not here today to bash Bob. Okay, Bob? But, but we have some problems happening. And these things have been happening in Sioux Falls for several years now. There was great voter confusion at St. Mark's Lutheran last Tuesday and I believe there was confusion throughout our city of Sioux Falls. We had a constant stream of residents who had been longtime users of St. Mark's Lutheran who came in and did not have their names in our book. And so I would call down to the auditor's office and they would look in the book and I was, I would have to tell these people, your voting place has been changed. And it was anywhere from Trinity Baptist to O'Gorman to Asbury Methodist to the Center for Active Generation. And these people were never notified that they don't come to St. Mark's Lutheran. And these are mature adults, so they've been voting for a long time. One couple came in, elder, an older couple who I know well, he's a retired pastor, and she came in and their names weren't on the books and I called down and was told that my friend Darlene was not registered to vote in Minnehaha County. She got on the phone and let that lady know that she'd been voting there for 40 years. Then I was told to just write her name in the book. So I think part of the problem in that instance is that we shifted books and I don't know if the Secretary of State got things mixed up or however that, that mess up happened, but I haven't, Bob told me that he's, they're going to be going through every name to make sure that that part gets cleared up. Other people came in and we had just had a city election on April 8th, a little more than a month earlier, and people thought it was Voting Center again. So they're heading wherever they voted before and thinking they can do that. And so at the end of the day, what we have is great confusion with our voters. And, and so at the end of the day, what we have is great confusion with our voters. And we, they deserve better than this. And, and I'm talking about school district, city, or state, or county, it's, it's across the board, we're all guilty, there, all of the, the election people. Uh, we need to have better communication, taking the guesswork out of where we're going to be voting. And I, as I've been talking with these different entities, I, I can say, and Jeff and I had a wonderful conversation last week, but here's the truth, we are never going to have consistency in voting. I would love to have a precinct that stays a precinct no matter what election it is. That is never going to happen. The county cannot afford to do that, the school district's doing their own thing, the city's doing their own thing, it's not going to come together. So the solution to me, and to people I visit with, would be that at every election, and I'm going to talk to the, the city council about this as well, at every election, you mail us a card that tells us where we will vote. That way, if it's Voting Centers, we have those options. If it's your normal precinct, you say you will be voting at Hope Lutheran, or whatever. I know it's going to take a little extra work, it's going to cost some more money to mail a little bulk mailing postcard, but then people will have that in their hand. They'll know that. And in Sioux Falls, I believe it's around eighty-eight thousand registered voters, eighty-eight, ninety thousand. That, maybe you'll get more people to turn out, too. You hit those people, you say, here's the election coming up, here's where, this is the issue, here's where you vote. Then you, you've at least given them the right information, because I think they really deserve that. So the, my thing is going to be mailing, let's do that. And that way, you can do, have the elections wherever you want to. Uh, the second thing I want to talk to you about is these people who work at our voting sites, God bless them. For years, I voted at Horace Mann. I come in, I see my neighbors sitting there, and I think, oh, yeah, that's nice, they're having a little coffee, they come in and out, and they're helping us out. Well, then Bob asked me to be a superintendent at the last presidential election, and oh my gosh, I did not realize what a commitment these people are making. And you go in the night before and set up, and, um, that takes about an hour. But the day of the election, I have it down here, I mean, you're, these people are coming in approximately six AM in the morning, and they're working, sitting there till seven PM. That's thirteen hours. And a lot of times, there's not times, time for a break. Thirteen-hour day. And then, at the end of that day, you do manual labor. Where I was at, we had to put tables back, chairs, moving them around, I mean, you're brain-dead by the end of thirteen hours. And we had to take the auto mark thing down, that's heavy. I had people there who had bad backs, um, taking the voting booths down. It, to me, that, it's overkill. And I know that it was difficult getting people to come in and help with these sixty-some precincts, but we've got to find a better way to make this manageable, to attract new people to help. Uh, two things I, I said to consider, a split shift, you know, asking someone to come in and work six hours, that could be doable. Um, or at least breaking, having a thing where people could take more breaks and have a, you, because you, once you're there, you can't leave. I mean, you're thirteen hours, you don't leave. Uh, the second thing I think would be, needs to be done, is you have a team of people, younger people, Boy Scouts, whatever, come in and take, do the manual takedown. Because it, that's just, the, our job is to protect the sanctity of, of the ballot. But doing that work at the end, that, that's, it's too much, and other people could help with that. So those are my suggestions. I do think there is, I think this is an issue, if there was some way to do a petition drive, I, I would be right out there doing it, because I do believe that the anger, frustration in our community is rising, and, whatever the election is, and something is going to have to be done. So that's, that's my two cents worth, and I thank you for listening. You're a great group of people.
Thank you, Teresa. It was great to have it written, too.
Madam Chair, I guess I'd like to...
That's fine. I just wanted to comment.
And by the way, I think your name is synonymous with petition drives.
[laughing]
Anyway, um, you know, when you talked about the voters that in your, that came to you being reassigned to different places, had they moved, or...
No, they were, nothing had changed through the years.
You think they went and voted in those like...
I, well, I hope that they did. One guy had been told, uh, we were the third place he had been directed to. So I, I'm, and it was, yeah, it was raining that day, too, so that was a difficulty.
So did they get a different answer when the other precincts called in, and then...
I don't know what, where, what had happened with him, but the other people, when I called, and, and I, you know, Bob's office was very good...
Busy.
Well, I'm sure they were busy, but they were good about saying, this is where this person goes now. But there, I mean, these people were like flabbergasted, why am I going to O'Gorman? I've never been there. What, what, how did this shift happen? No one told me about it. Guessing game, I mean, it's, it's not acceptable. And I think we're still playing by the same rules that we had twenty, thirty years ago when we were fifty, sixty thousand, uh, community population. We're growing, and we have not been able to work with that. We've got to change how we're thinking about this, and relying on TV, because some people have said, well, we had the TV, we had the Argus Leader, we have internet. Forget it, peop-, a lot of people aren't connected to those things. We ca-, we should not be pushing our public service to people on those media entities. We've got it, you have an opportunity with this bulk mailing thing to touch them, just like you send out the drivers when we have to have, renew our driver's license or property tax. I think, I think, and like I said here, if you ask the public, would you like to spend a little tax dollars to have that in your hand, they would say yes, we would love to have that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So Teresa, I know that one of the postcards that got sent out, not by Bob's office, but directed people to vote at First Lutheran on North Minnesota Avenue, which, of course, was the wrong address, and so even on postcards...
Oh, okay, I didn't hear that one.
Things can be boofed up. But I also talked to someone who worked up on the poll books on the city election, and after a thirteen-hour day, you mentioned brain-dead, they were saying four thousand voters, thirteen hours, mistakes happen, and, uh, that is certainly an issue.
You mean, so, about the people working there?
Yeah, I mean, that was the same...
Well, and it's a huge responsibility, I mean, it's, and then we're counting the ballots, I mean, the, the whole thing, I don't think the public realizes how massive this is. They just assume that you go in and cast your vote. And so hats off to those people who do it, and there, there's, you've got one gal, uh, over at, uh, she used to be I, IPC, Ahilda, I talked with her, she's been doing it for like twenty years. I mean, and she's eight, in her eighties. Wow, I mean, you've got some fabulously dedicated people, but I think we, we can lighten the load a little bit by being creative.
Any other questions or comments for Teresa? Again, Teresa, thank you, and thank you for putting the written suggestions down for us and stuff, and we will see what we can do to have the auditor look into some of these things. Thank you. Are there any other public comments that are not on the agenda? All right, with that, we will move forward with today's agenda.
Regular business, item number ten is a public hearing to consider joint spending plan between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County for the 2014 Burn Justice Assistant Grant, and authorize the chairman to sign the interlokal agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County for the grant. Michelle Boyd.
Good morning, Michelle Boyd, Chief Deputy with the Sheriff's Office. On May twenty-seventh, I was in front of you and presented the spending plan for the Burn JAG grant, which is a disparate allocation between the city and the county. Um, just to, if you recall, that amount that came in, um, is seventy thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars, in which the county will receive thirty-five percent of that, and the city will receive sixty-five percent. I'm here today to ask you to sign the agreement between the city, the mayor has signed the MOU, and we would just request that you do the same, so we can begin that process.
This is a public hearing, so are there any questions for Michelle? Is there anyone that wants to speak as a proponent to this? Is there anyone that wants to speak as an opponent? Seeing none?
I'm trying to make a motion to authorize you to sign this, uh, MOU.
I have a motion.
Second.
A second, I have a motion and a second. Are there any additional comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Michelle.
Item eleven is a public hearing to consider drainage permit application, number thirteen dash sixty-one, from John Zomer to conduct agricultural drainage on property illegally described as the northwest quarter, accept R Y, and accept Sabres addition, and accept the north six hundred and sixty feet, west six hundred and sixty feet, in section one, Township one oh two north, range forty-eight west, Brandon Township. David Heindl.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Heindl, Planner One, Minnehaha County Planning Department. The topic of this public hearing, which notice was sent out on May twelfth for the public hearing, for drainage permit thirteen dash sixty-one and fourteen dash twenty. Just to give you a brief overview, um, the location map, this location's about two and a half miles southwest of Garrettson, it's at the corner. The southeast corner of Edison Township, right here, and the northeast corner of Brandon Township. Um, the, the, there's an existing tile project that John Zomer, that's Drainage Permit thirteen dash sixty-one, this is the area outlined in yellow. Um, this project, which I'll get to in, in a second, outlets, outlets into an intermittent stream, and is within one mile of Split Rock Creek. And this area outlined in red, right here, these two areas right here, is a proposed tile project, which is fourteen dash twenty, which the downstream property owner, Daniel and Elizabeth Irvine, they submitted a, a PLO administrative decision, which is why we're holding this public hearing, um, on that drainage permit fourteen dash twenty. And thirteen dash sixty-one was submitted as a complaint, an official complaint regarding the effects that the proposed tile project and the existing tile project could have on, on the downstream property owner as well, in terms of just contaminants, of just chemical, possible chemical pollution from the increased, um, drainage. So this just shows the two tile projects, the proposed tile in red, and the, the existing tile project, as well as the outlet, and I'll go into further, um, and explain drainage permit thirteen dash sixty-one that was submitted by John Zomer. And this was back September thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen, we approved the drainage permit, because it does outlet into an intermittent stream, as you can see right here. Um, and this outlet is within one mile of Split Rock Creek, hence, there was no downstream notification required. This is an existing bore under two fifty-sixth Street, looking, looking south. If you move down the line here, this is looking on to John Zomer's property, and then continuing to look parallel with the, the stream that heads towards the outlet. Um, these are just some feeder lines that would connect with one of the main outlets. And then this, you can kind of see the outlet in this one, I'll show the, a better picture of the outlet where it connects with the stream that would connect with Split Rock Creek. Um, right here, this is the tile outlet that outlets into the stream, which, as you can see, it's a, um, pretty heavily wet area. Um, this is the intermittent stream looking northwest, and this is on top of the, um, right here. And this is looking southeast, on to the downstream property owner, Daniel and Elizabeth Irvine. Um, this is the, the stream that connects back to Split Rock Creek, as you can see back here where, um, the trees are, this is the location of the creek. Um, and if you have any questions on drainage permit thirteen dash sixty-one, um, I'd feel free to answer any questions that you have right now. Um, if not, then I can proceed with drainage permit fourteen dash twenty.
Are there any questions on this first permit? My first, go ahead, Commissioner Kelly.
We've got, can we talk about it?
Sure.
We have a memorandum here from Kirsten, uh, regarding our ability to even, even consider thirteen sixty-one, so I, I don't know, perhaps we should hear from Kirsten on whether we should proceed on this. If you wish.
Yeah, Kirsten, if you could, um, I think we're, I think there's a question on the timing of when this was, on petition was filed. So Kirsten, if you want to address that?
Uh, thank you, Commissioners. Uh, just to be clear, um, as far as our drainage ordinance goes, this was not an appeal taken within five days.
It was not, it was not an appeal, it was an official written objection that was filed contemporaneously with...
With fourteen twenty?
For fourteen twenty.
Okay, so, I guess, as far as any, and I know we're styling it differently, but as far as any appeal that you normally have under Article One, I, I, I would, I would say that it's not timely, and it's not appropriate under, under Article One. Uh, under Article Four, um, people can bring more generalized drainage, uh, complaints, if you will. What our Article Four of our ordinance says, though, is the county commission has to exercise jurisdiction over those type of disputes affirmatively. So if this is the type of dispute that you want to exercise jurisdiction over and make decisions about before you in this posture, um, you will have to elect to do that. The effect of doing that is, we'll have existing permits already approved, and appeal rights have, have passed, or an appeal's already been taken and rejected, where, uh, complainants will be able to come in and, uh, address a previously granted permit. And I guess, what, what I'll say about that is this, if you allow these type of, of challenges under Article Four to come over you, and it's up to you to do that, um, that opens you up to arguably, under equal protection grounds, everybody similarly situated who wants to come in and challenge an existing approved permit before you, you will have to take that up. That, that's my legal opinion. So if you exercise jurisdiction over this today as a generalized drainage complaint about what's in thirteen sixty-one, you're committing yourself to making this a, a, a forum in, in resolving that. If you decline to do that, um, there is a remedy in Circuit Court. Uh, the statutes are very clear that people can always bring a dispute to Circuit Court, uh, over existing drainage projects. However, if you exercise jurisdiction over that today outside of Article One into that Article Four area, I would say that you'll pretty much have to hear all of these about existing, uh, drainage projects. If you want to do that, that's fine, but that is, that is the, uh, consequence of doing that today, in my opinion.
An opinion from our state attorney's office. Any comments or questions for Kirsten?
And maybe Scott has something additional, or maybe...
Well, based on what I just heard from Kirsten, um, I would like to, uh, give you my recommendation, and I didn't introduce myself, sorry, Scott Anderson, County Planning Department. And as you know, all of these drainage, uh, under Article Four, this would be a drainage complaint, and my recommendation to you as the Drainage Board would be not to open that can of worms, because what we're going to have then is just a, a continuing, uh, option, or, you know, we're just going to be dealing with these over and over again, where, where we issue them administratively, they have the right to, uh, go into a named stream, and, and we went through a process, Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Barth, and a, and a large drainage task force crafted that ordinance to allow that without having to get downstream property owner's signatures, because it is an intermittent stream, it is within one mile of a named creek, and then thusly, there should be very adequate drainage to, to handle a, a tiling project. My concern is that if we open this door, and we start administratively, administratively reviewing all of these as a drainage complaint, then, um, we're just adding a whole nother layer of, of review, and I think it's going to just bog down the system. I mean, I, I, I think there's a potential for that.
Can I add something? Thank you. Uh, and I would add to this, I don't see any allegation in this one that it's not functioning as it's supposed to, or tile has been laid in a place where the permit didn't allow. I think you can make that, you can distinguish those type of cases from this, in which I don't, I don't think there's any allegation that the tiling is in any differently than it was, uh, than it was approved and functioning as it, it was approved. You can make that distinction, I think. But in this case, I think Scott's concerns are valid with that, if, if there's not those other functional or compliance allegations. I could see a situation where Article Four would be appropriate for that, so...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, for one, don't, in, in any way intend to go back and review every single drainage case we have. At the same time, in this particular case, with the continued application of, of fourteen twenty, it's sort of germane to the discussion on, on that, so I'm happy we've had this, uh, this presentation on the, the project from last year. But I think, uh, that we should go ahead and move forward and listen to fourteen dash twenty, which is the, the new application for this year, and, uh, we'll just see where that goes.
I think we'd have to have a motion.
Yeah, the, Kirsten has recommended we pass a motion to decline and to hear the matter due to the untimeliness of the appeal under Article One. untimeliness of the appeal under Article One and to decline to exercise jurisdiction under Article Four, and I would make that motion.
Is there a second? Just a second, just a second, I have finished the motion first.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second.
And since we have had, if I may, sorry. Since we have declared a public hearing on this, I think as to what you're proposing in your motion, or as what we're discussing about the jurisdictional matters, the timeliness, et cetera, I think hearing the proponents and the opponents is appropriate as to that part of it, so.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Did you want to make a comment, sir?
I have a question. Dan Irvine, I'm the property owner downstream from there. In order to file a five-day appeal, I would hope that you guys have sent out some kind of notification that this is in process then. Otherwise, how is the property owner supposed to know that there's been a permit put out? How, how can you appeal it? This permit was taken out last year, the digging didn't go on until this spring. How am I supposed to know that that permit is being issued? And I have a five-day window from, when?
Last September.
Right. But I've never been notified. The only, the only thing that was brought up on this was when I saw him digging, I went and investigated it, and that's how I found out that there'd been permits issued, and I also found out about the other two permits.
You were not, you were not notified as a downstream owner?
In this type of ordinance, he does not have to be because it is into an intermittent stream, so that is part of the ordinance, which was in our jurisdiction, so.
Thank you.
That was my question.
And if, and if I may, if you think that notice isn't, isn't sufficient, that's a matter to amend the ordinance, so.
Any questions or comments from the proponents or opponents? Go ahead.
Good morning, I'm John Zomer. I'm the one that installed initially applied for drainage permit last September. I, I completely understand Mr. Irvine's concern. However, in this particular case, I would like to inform you that after I obtained a drainage permit last fall, I had tile, big rolls of tile pipe delivered to my farm that sat there all winter long, that in this particular case would have been for Mr. Irvine a pretty good clue that there's some drainage projects in the works. And he did not say anything or file any complaints until after I actually installed the tile this spring, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Barth?
We have a motion.
Yes, we have a motion. Did you have another comment?
I don't want to go back and forth and rebut this all the time, but, but the tile was there, he could have been draining the other side of, of the properties and stuff like that. The three gentlemen that are here in question about all the drain tiling going on in this situation came over to my place about two years ago and asked me if I had a problem with it, and I expressed that I did have a problem with it. I have, this, our farm is operated solely on a well. We do not have rural water. I was afraid and am afraid that that will contaminate my well. My well is within three hundred foot of the outlet of those drain tiles, my drinking water is, so I'm very concerned. I, I honestly thought that he was going to run the tiles down the other side. It wouldn't be coming down this direction. I, I didn't have any idea what the plot was or what the, what the diagram was. So that's just in response to the drain tiling, the drain tile was setting up there on top of the hill on a vacated road, which is right on the, right on the roadway, so I didn't know if it was going to the south, or I mean to the east or to the west of that road that was just setting up there in a pile.
Madam Chair, I think we should vote on this now because this is just discussion that we can have on the second application.
We have a motion and a second on the ta, table to decline to hear this matter due to untimeliness of the appeal under Article One and to decline the exercise of jurisdiction under Article Four. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. That particular one can be taken to circuit court for appeal. That will go on to the next one.
Good morning, David Heinel, Planner One, Planning and Zoning Department. Drainage permit fourteen dash twenty, which as I mentioned is an appeal of an administrative decision which was filed within five working days following approval, which was on May first, two thousand and fourteen. This was submitted by Stanley Hansen and Pete Johnson. As you can see, the two properties, Pete Johnson's property is right here, is the two tile lines, and then Stanley Hansen, actually, I got that backwards. Stanley Hansen's property is this long rectangular piece right here, and Pete Johnson's is right here. This is an, this is a proposed tile project that would connect into an existing tile project drainage permit thirteen dash sixty-one, which the outlet is into the intermittent stream, which is within one mile of Split Rock Creek, just for your reference. This is an, this is the proposed area where the tile would go. This is looking south towards two fifty-sixth Street. This is continuation, this is on Pete Johnson's property, looking southeast towards, back towards that connection. This is looking parallel with two fifty-sixth Street. As you can see there, the outlet would be potentially right there, and this is looking straight towards where the proposed tile would connect with the existing tile project. Proposed tile, or each of the tile lines are being placed in areas that function as part of the same watershed. According to the certified wetlands determination, there are no wetlands in the proposed area for the drain tile. On staff, on May twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, staff conducted a site visit and determined that the proposed tile lines are being placed in traditionally wet areas where water flows naturally. The applicants plan to connect the line, tile lines with an existing bore under two fifty-sixth Street, as I've mentioned, to the existing tile south of two fifty-sixth Street. Staff finds that the proposed tile lines will be placed in traditionally wet areas and should allow water to continually flow into the intermittent stream which connects with Split Rock Creek. So staff recommends the drainage board approve drainage permit fourteen dash twenty. So if you have any questions, feel free to entertain, entertain any questions that you may have.
Do you have any questions this morning for David?
We might in a bit, let's go ahead with.
Okay, I, we'll go ahead then. The proponent, does a proponent of this have any comments? The proponent, people in favor of this, are there any comments from the people in favor of this drainage system? Just identify yourself with your name and your address, please.
Pete Johnson, forty-eight, three twenty, two hundred and fifty-fifth Street. I've lived within a mile of this site for over seventy years. I owned that farm for twenty-eight years before Dan Irvine bought it. The spring water and runoff water has been running down to the river since the railroad put the underpass for the tracks in the eighteen hundreds or before. If the, if the tile is put in or not put in, there will always be water running down that, underneath that underpass down to the river. If the tile is put in, there will be more clean filtered water coming through the tile and less runoff water because the ground won't be so saturated with water that it will take in more runoff water in a, in a big rain. The well is over a hundred and thirty steps or over a hundred yards from where the tile water will be running down the river. Dennis Hoven, who has worked on the well, says the well's about eighty feet deep. It has a well casing to down about thirty feet and the rest is in corset rock. He says the water comes from an underground aquifer, probably from Canada. I got three wells and Lowell Wurkey has one that is in the same aquifer. All four was dug by Rudy Brothers from Flandre. One of my wells is only twenty-eight feet from a tile, and I have had no problems with it. The wa, the tile water and water runoff water is all on corset, all the way to the river, if you can see by the pictures, I mean you can't see that here, and yet the water will never run uphill through solid corset and get in the well. The well is located twenty feet or more higher than the tile water. Dan Irvine said in his complaint letter that he is surrounded by corset. So it's all, it's all corset, all the, all over in that, down there. When I tried to, couldn't put in post, couldn't do nothing, so it's all, it's all solid corset. You're not going to have water. I don't feel that he has a problem whatsoever with that. And if, if you did take, could see the picture here of the buildings, his well is way up here right next to his house. And there's the water.
Mr. Johnson, can you, can you show Robert, and he'll point on the map where it's at so we can see? There. David, can you point to it?
That ain't very big picture there.
That's not the right one. There we are.
On that.
That corner spot down there.
Lower right, actually.
Yep, other way, there you go.
Oh, Dan could tell you too where it's at. It's up by that little, no.
Yep, you were at the right spot before, Robert. Now go up.
No.
That's good.
But you can see where the.
Got a pen, Robert?
But you can see where is, the water's going to run down through here to the tile. There's a barn, but up here is, is, is well. Now that's all solid corset, all the way down through there. And this is a big drop off between there and there, so I, I do not feel there's ever, ever going to be any problem with drainage water or tile water running in there. We got, it's, I've had water run through there when I owned the place, I don't know what year, the waters run through there all year round, every day of the year. And it, this, putting this tile in's not going to make any difference. The only thing I feel, if I had it, I'd be happy they did put tile in because I'd have a lot cleaner water coming through there. When they put that tile in, a week after, John put the tile in, a week after he put the tile in, the water was coming through the tile but also running down through the gully. And I've had tile for thirty-five years, and we drank out of it and take it home and put it in the refrigerator and everything else. And I drank out of that and it was great, but the muddy water was coming down through the dugout well. When these, when we come back three weeks later, the only water that was running was coming out of the tile, and it was nice clean water. To me, it's, it's a real advantage as far as for Dan because he's going to have good pure water coming down there instead of runoff water. Runoff water will carry your chemicals, but when it's filtered down through the ground four or five feet and comes through a tile, it's, it's, it's not, it don't carry all them chemicals. So that's my feeling about it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Question. How many acres are you going to be tiling there? Is that?
Mine, probably about twen, twenty-some acres.
Okay.
And Stan, I don't suppose Stan's going to have more than about.
Have you ever had your well tested?
Have I ever had my well tested?
Yeah, for nitrates, whatever?
I got, no, my well is, is real good, and all the wells are, because we're in, we're under that, we're in that aquifer, or like Rudy Brother says, it's the underground river, they called it. It is very hard, but we don't have no nitrates or anything in it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other questions for Mr. Johnson? Any other proponents that would like to speak? Anyone else in favor of the drainage that would like to speak? And this would be the time for the opponent, if you, are you a proponent?
Yeah.
Okay. Identify yourself and address, please.
Stan Hanson, forty-eight, three, two fifty-third Street. Forty-eight, three, two four, two fifty-third Street, Garrettson, South Dakota.
Could you speak up a little, Mr. Hanson, please?
Yep.
Pardon me?
Speak a little louder.
Oh, sorry. I don't have a real strong voice, but.
Stick your mouth in the microphone.
All right, all right. But my drainage project is right to the, to the east of the map. It would drain probably ten, fifteen acres, and I've had numerous tiling projects, and from my experience, the soil profile can actually hold more water in, in large rain events, and if I was Mr. Irvine, I'd be more concerned about surface runoff than I would drain tile water. I guess that's all my only comment, but thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Hanson? Okay, seeing none, any other proponent comments? And we'll go to opponent comments, if you'd like to speak in opposition to the tile.
I'm Dan Irvine, forty-eight, three four three, two hundred and fifty-sixth Street in Garrettson. I, as far as the well location, the well location is about three hundred foot from where the outlet is there. As far as Pete said, the elevation and such on that, he's, he's correct, it's probably elevated up above where the tiling is. The stream is intermittent stream, it doesn't flow all the time. There's been times when I've been out there that, since I've been there, I've been there twenty-one years now, and there's times that the stream, well, three years ago it was bone dry. Couldn't see anything in it, nothing running through it. We had a dry year that year. Most of the years, more often than not, the stream is dry towards fall. That's where my main concerns comes in, is with my well, situated as it is, it's going to draw water from wherever it can. And if the drain tiling is still draining, it's going to draw that water through there. I've got a report from the USGS that talks about, they did a study on grounds, the, the reaction of water in the grounds, different types of ground, and they, they do say in there that, excuse me, that the surface water and groundwater is all interconnected. There really isn't that great of a difference. Sure, when it goes through the ground, it purifies, but part of my problem there, as Pete said, is mostly corset. I've had, I've had some drilling samples done down south of where the well is, across into the tillable ground, and there's a lot of sand and gravel there. Now, sand and gravel and corset do not filter the water. The water flows through it with the chemicals that are in there, it's not obstructed. If you have soil, that will filter the water, but the sand and gravel, the corset will not. Sometimes the corset has pockets where that water will set in, and, and it'll be contaminated water. As far as Mr. Barth's question about nitrates, I have had my well tested. My well tested out at seven parts per million. If you get to ten, you possibly have problems. When I moved out there, we had young children, that's why I tested it. If it gets over five parts, they recommend that the young, the infants not use the water. If it gets above ten parts, they recommend that adults not use the water. They'll call, it's called the blue baby syndrome, the babies will suffocate basically. The nitrogen nitrates replaces the oxygen in their blood system. That's the main concern that I have. I have a granddaughter that's a year old now. She doesn't live with us, but she visits us. I expect more grandchildren. I, I do not want our well contaminated by this stuff. I've also in the USGS, they readily admit that the chemicals are changing so fast that they cannot test them fast enough to tell you what's going to happen in relation to water, in relation to how it absorbs in the ground, in relation to the contamination of wells. I do believe I'm on an aquifer, that aquifer runs all the way from Canada, picked up the nitrate somewhere before it got to my place, or they picked it up at my place. Like I said, I've just got all kinds of information here that they, that they tell you about, and if I honestly felt. And if I honestly felt that this would not create any problems, I wouldn't be concerned. But I do, I, I'm fearful for my water supply. Um, I don't know, I guess, I guess right there, I'll have to ask you if you have any questions. I guess there is one more part in this that I can show on here. Just, it's just, uh, source information from USGS, basically, you know, part of it, if you can do that very well. Part of it, the green, the green portions of those globes up there are nitrate problems that they've found throughout the country. And the, the nitrate problems by the manufacturer, by the source, that they know where the sources are, has been mostly contained because of pollution programs and because of government regulations. The problems where they're having, the biggest share of the problem is, is from the farmers, the runoff. If you have heavy rains, as Pete said, you get some runoff, but the runoff doesn't just stop. It doesn't, all of it doesn't continue to go on through to the stream, it deposits along the way. It drops off the nitrates along the way. And if my well draws that in, there's a problem. Some of these, some of these that you can see on here, they're well over, and this is, this is a little bit north of us, there isn't anything right exactly in our area. But that right there is probably, you know, over 3/4 percent nitrogen, nitrate problem in their water that they tested up there. Sure, around the farming communities, you're going to have, well, I shouldn't say that. I was going to say around farming communities, you have more, but there is a lot of problems that they have inside it too with nitrates, um, because of fertilizing yards and different things like that. But like I said, um, my main problem is, is I'm, I'm fearful to lose my well, that I can use it as a source of water for myself and my family. I called up rural water, talked to them. They said with the railroad on my north and west side, and the corset comes out of the ground on my south and east side, that it would cost at least $7,500 to run rural water into my property. They have to get a special permit to bore under the railroad tracks. Uh, the railroad also requires some additional casings and things like that. And that $7,500 was if they don't hit any serious granite under there. Um, the sky is the limit. Uh, the other thing is, is it's going to, it'll be a $40 minimum charge. That's what, I shouldn't say minimum. That's what the average family uses, is $40 for water. And also I have livestock that I use, that use my water at times. So I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Question?
Commissioner Kelly.
Um, you said you tested, I, how long ago did you test it, the well?
It's, it's probably been 10 years ago now.
Have you tested recently?
I just tested the other day, and the results aren't back yet.
Cause, okay, um, I mean, if, if it's at seven, staying at seven, there isn't a problem.
Unless you have infants there. Okay.
Well, there's standards, and, and 10 is the standard, is that not correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Um, so I, I guess my concern, you know, my interest would be in, in whether there's been any change in the 10 years in the nitrate level, and whether there were any tests prior to that. Um, I understand the concern with the cost of bringing in rural water, but if it becomes a major concern, the, the nitrate problem at seven or 10 is solved somewhat by the, by the rural water. But I, I guess, you know, if there hasn't been a change, then it's within acceptable, it's within acceptable levels.
It is at this time.
Well, I know, but, but there's nothing, if it hasn't changed in seven, in 10 years, then I don't know why it's an issue.
I don't understand your question.
I guess until you get the results of your test you just had, um, which we have no idea, but if, if there's no change in the level of nitrate, then maybe seven is just what it sits at, that, that tiling or anything else isn't going to affect this.
The tiling has just been put in, so I'm, I'm doing kind of a, a, um, a test now to see what the levels are now. And then as I progress through the years, if this tiling's allowed, I'm going to have to maintain and keep testing it to see, to see where my levels stay. I didn't have any reason before to really believe that the nitrates or that the chemicals would increase, as long as things were pretty much status quo.
But, okay, I, but you haven't offered any evidence that, that the tiling will affect the nitrate level? Or if you did, I missed it.
The tile is just put in. I mean, the tile, what, what happens is, is as, as the ground is drained, it drains off the nitrogen, which is a fertilizer. That nitrogen moves downstreams, and maybe it drops off at different portions along the way, maybe the lower portion, which has happened before. My creek up above, up towards Pete and Stan's property up there, that slew ground, that filtering area, has been damp there, but the water has not been flowing through my property. Not been, so if the nitrogen comes down to that point, sets there, it gets closer to my well source. And then the nitrogen turns into the nitrates. And if, if I'm, I'm just afraid that if they pull it out of those fields up farther and drain tile it, and dump it down within 300 foot of my well, that that's going to increase the nitrates in my water. It's going to increase the chemicals that they have up there. You can say that water looks nice and clear coming out of the pipe, but I, I, I don't think I would, I would feed it to my granddaughter.
Commissioner Burr.
Um, you know, I, I do know that nitrates are an issue, but I also know that there are some ways of, uh, there's bioreactors which reduce the nitrate in a, in a drain system. But in looking at this last area where the water goes across your property, it looks like that's been rushing across that area for, you know, 100 years or more, and that the topsoil's been washed away, and that water's not going to lollygag there and soak in. And at the same time, you're grazing animals there, and, and you know, they have their own special pollutant that they contribute. And that's also near your well. So wouldn't it be better to have that water zip by than to, you know, have it soaking in on, on the hill above you?
If it does zip by, that would be ideal. Um, they had some pictures up there earlier to where they, you saw it pooling right down as soon as you got off onto my property, it was pooling there. You know, that, that's kind of a...
I think just north of your part, north of the, the railroad tracks where, where it stops, right, isn't that?
The pipe is right on the, the west side or north side, however you're going to look at it.
And then it goes another 15 feet or something to the culvert under the tracks, right?
It does, it, well, the drainage does, the pipe does not.
Right. Um, and how big is that culvert under the tracks, or whatever?
I would guess it's probably about four foot.
So it's, it's had a heavy load in the past. When you get a big rain, it comes, you could float your canoe there, huh?
Be a fast ride.
Okay. Is there anything that your neighbors could do that would make this better for you?
Well, I guess, um, myself, my wife have talked about if they have, if they want to open an account or something, that, that they could put money into the account where we could draw back if we needed to put water into our property, if we were harmed by their drain tiling. Um, if, uh, you know, there, did you say there's something that you could do to reduce nitrates and drain tiling?
Yep, it's called a bioreactor. You run the, the tile water through a bunch of wood chips. Basically, you take an area, meet Commissioner Kelly, and have a bed of wood chips about four foot deep, and can't be pine trees, by the way, it has to be different trees. But it takes out 80% I think of the nitrates, at least in the studies that SDSU has done.
That make me feel a little more comfortable. What does it do for the chemicals, the other pesticides and herbicides?
They're not finding that much of that in there, I guess. Here comes Scott here.
Excuse me just for a second, but Scott Anderson, the planning department. And looking at this property, you may not be able to install a bioreactor, given the depth of the bedrock. As you said, you need to dig, you could dig down four feet, you may hit bedrock there, or the corset.
And that actually, you know, again, with the water rushing across your, your land, I, I'm not sure that yours would be the spot to put it, but just mention the technology's available.
Yeah, there, just, just so you understand, the water doesn't always rush across, it dries up completely sometimes. So that's the times that I'm concerned about, is when it's draining from up above, but it's not draining out, it's pooling. There's a, there's a filtering slew right up above this, that it could be setting in for a while. And that's where, that's, that's the times I'm afraid of this, if this well draws, and it happens to draw from that point, that I'll be getting the nitrates and stuff down into it. I'm not worried about when it's big flow.
One more question, maybe?
Yep, Commissioner.
Sir, when do you expect to get a, a result on your well test?
Well, I sent it to the national laboratories to get it tested. I think they said it was seven to 14 days, and I sent it probably about three, four days ago.
Any other questions? I just, I have a comment. Um, I do have a well. My well is about 80 to 90 feet deep through granite. I am within 100 yards of lots of tiling. My property sits below the tiling, the tiling is higher, and actually runs back into, behind my house, into another pasture. According to my well guy, I have no fears. I've also know of a situation where ground was flooded over top of the well cover completely. We would, with, it was not, it was my brother-in-law's place, and in a pasture full of manure and everything else, and he was positive his well was contaminated, his well is in solid granite. And, um, I mean, they drilled hundreds, and they came out, they tested that well, and they said there'd been absolutely no contamination with the water over top, sitting over top of that well cover for days before the water receded. They said there was absolutely no contamination through that, and no contamination leaching down in it, even with feet of water sending over top of it. Never had any concerns about my own well, and I'm closer than you are to, to several tile lines, and I sit low. And I've been assured that it isn't an issue, although I haven't retested my well since I initially put it in. So, are there any other comments?
Do you have a, do you have a, a modern well? Is it just been...
Mine was put in probably 23 years ago.
Yeah. Mine, mine had a windmill above it at one time, so I'm not real sure it's quite that tight, you know?
Commissioner Kelly.
I'd like to make a motion.
Are there, are there any other opponents?
I was going to say, are there any other opponents to this? Are there any other proponents? You can, identify yourself.
My name is John Zomer. I reside at 2632647th Avenue, Valley Springs. Again, I own this land up there that we're talking about, right next to Mr. Irvine. And I just would like to make a couple of comments, first being, I did initially talk to Dan about doing tiling, and he shared with me his concerns about well contamination. Um, myself, having grown up on a, on a farm where we, we grew up on well water, um, and, and I, I also would like to submit that there are experts out there who will argue the opposite of what information Dan provided us, as far as what kind of water really is coming out of these tiles. Um, I have also done research as a, I try to be a good neighbor, and I told Dan that if I had any inclination at all that I thought I would contaminate his well, I wouldn't even be here discussing this with you. That's the last thing I would want to do. Now, I'm, I'm glad to hear that Mr. Irvine is tested, took a test of his well water. Um, a year down the road, three years, five years, 10 years, if his nitrate levels are shooting way up, we have a problem. And I think at that point in time, uh, because Dan is now establishing the quality of his water, he will have a very strong case against us upstream farmers who have since tiled. Um, and aside from that, it, the water that, Dan is going to get our water regardless. It's either going to come through washing, over top of the ground, or it's going to come through a filtered process through tile. In fact, Dan is going to get water from us both ways in a hard rain. It's going to come over top of the ground, water runs downhill, we can't help that, we can't stop that. Um, I'm not a betting person. If I was, I, if, if any of this farm runoff water is content, raising his nitrate levels, when five years approaches, 10 years approaches, I'm going to guess his nitrate levels will go down. That's my personal assessment, opinion, based on information on studies that I have read with, with tile water. Any questions?
Any other proponents?
Thank you.
Yep, one more. Mr. Johnson.
I'd like to state my name and address.
Thank you again.
Pete Johnson, 48328-255th Street. Um, the only couple deals, like you were saying about your, everybody's down through corset, or they're down through solid, uh, granite, all our wells are, they're, and another thing Dan talks about contaminating his well, his well is in an aquifer. There's probably 40 wells around there that's in the same aquifer. That little bit of water that's running through his place is not going to get through that 300 feet of corset. It's going to run down to the river. Um, if that, if the runoff water would get in the, in the corset, it'll get in that underground aquifer. It will not just stay in that little place where his well is. His well will, I would guess that he could go to my place and his place and, and low warchies, and have all the water checked, and every one of them would come out the same, as far as nitrate and whatever else is in the water. I know his, I'm sure his water's hard, because it was hard when I owned the place. And all the water in all our wells, low warchies in everybody's, is very hard. It's good water, but it's very hard water. So I don't know what the concern is, how you're going to ever condemn somebody's well by, or ruin somebody's well by going through that much corset. It'll never come even close to it. So that's all my comment is.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson. Any other comments? Commissioner Kelly, did you have a motion?
I would move to uphold the decision of the planning commission.
I have a motion to uphold. Do I have a second?
It's the decision of the staff, I believe, that the planning commission didn't give it.
Yep, commission of the staff.
To approve the drainage permit. I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to uphold the planning...
Department's...
Department's decision.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I mean, we need some clarification, because there, this, there is no decision of the planning staff. Today you need to make, you're approving...
The drainage, okay.
...as the drainage board.
I would change that to uphold the recommendation of the planning staff.
No.
No?
To approve the drainage permit application.
To approve, okay, that's my motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the drainage permit application for 14-20. Right? All those in favor say aye. dash twenty. Right? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen is authorize the chairman to sign a contract amendment between Minnehaha County and Armour Correctional Health Services Incorporated regarding staffing of medical director position. Jeff Gromer.
Morning Commissioners. Jeff Gromer. I'm the warden for the jail, for the county. I'm here to just address the proposal from Armour Corrections on adjusting the, or Armour Correctional Medicine on adjusting the health services contract, specifically relating to the physician coverage and medical director's position. The original contract was written to indicate that the medical director would be, physician would be filled by a physician working thirty-two hours within the, for the county. It was budgeted a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. Armour has proposed an adjustment to that arrangement, which would allow for the hiring of an advanced practice nurse or a physician's assistant. The proposal indicates that the medical director's position would be filled by a medical doctor or physician, working in conjunction with the residency program for sixteen hours per week. That would be filled by Dr. Gene Heisler with the Center for Family Medicine, and then a portion of those hours would be covered by doctors in their residency program. The other sixteen hours of the thirty-two would be covered by the advanced practice nurse or physician's assistant, who would be hired by Armour. In addition to the sixteen physician hours, as well as the sixteen hours provided by the nurse practitioner or the physician's assistant, Dr. Heiser would perform the required supervision of the advanced practice nurse or physician's assistant. The dollar figure for this doesn't have a tremendous effect on the original budgeted amount. We had originally budgeted for about a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for the medical director's position, so just over two hundred thousand dollars. Based on the proposal, the physician hours would be at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. The advanced practice nurse would be in a range of the fifty or sixty dollars per hour, which, and then fifteen hundred dollars a month for those supervision requirements. The total of that comes in, in that eighty-five to ninety-three thousand dollar range. So it's a net decrease in what was budgeted with just a minor adjustment in the way that services are provided.
Are there any questions for Warden Gromer? Look for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the chairman to sign an amendment between Minnehaha County and Armour Correctional Health Services. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item fourteen, authorize the chairman to sign change order number two for an increase of forty-three thousand seven hundred dollars to the contract with Pram Construction Incorporated for additional structure removal and new backfill material on Project MC one twenty-one STR dash thirteen. Jason Reeves.
Good morning Commissioners. Jason Reeves, project engineer with the highway department. We have a change order for the Highway one twenty-one project, which is also Eros Road, with Pram Construction. This will be the second change order for this project. Two items on the change order, on the pictures that I submitted with the memo. The contractor ran into what we found to be the old bridge deck in the bridge that was prior to the one that was in service. You can hopefully see it a little better on your pictures, but the rebar was, is sticking up out of the ground on the one picture, and that was covered by the vegetation prior to when we started construction. So we weren't able to realize this was going to happen until they really started to dig into it, figuratively and literally speaking. And then also, their old footings were there, and where the arrows at on the old footing, and then on the bottom picture under that, where you can see that old footing. Well, the new footing actually goes in the exact same spot as that footing. So it was really not possible to do any of this work without removal of that. As they went digging around on the, this is on the north bridge, which they're still under construction on, the south bridge, they went and did some digging around on that also, to see if we would have the same scenario, so that we could have a price for the entire thing, rather than doing two separate ones. Found the same scenario on that bridge, that the old bridge deck and some footings are also in the channel bed of that bridge, which we are going to need to remove. They're asking for thirty-six thousand dollars to do this work, which is a significant amount of money, I realize. The removal, just in comparison, the removal of the two structures that were on the current roadway in the bid were fifty thousand dollars. So I don't want to say we're getting a deal on these. They're fourteen thousand dollars less than the ones that they're removing, and we didn't know that they were there, and they have to dig through all the mud and water and whatnot to remove these. So we do feel that this is a fair and just price. They've also asked for two weeks of extension for this item, to do the removal of the two structures that were in the channel, which we also feel is justified. Do you want, do you have any questions before I go to the next item, I guess?
I do have a question. So the debris there, the concrete piled from the old bridge deck, that's not the old bridge deck that we just removed? That's the one from before that?
Correct. I believe the bridges that were in service, that we're now replacing, were put in in the seventies. That would have been the bridge deck from, say, the twenties or thirties, probably. It looks like they, they just, they wrecked it down and dropped it in the channel and built the new bridges.
Is that, is that sort of a lazy thing to do? They?
Absolutely.
They should not have done that.
Yeah. And, you know, they probably said, well, we're gonna be long gone, dead, maybe retired, maybe dead, and let somebody else deal with it, and it's cheaper to do it this way, I guess. You know, it's an unfortunate thing that you run into and unforeseen.
And this bid includes both bridges taking the debris out of the channel?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for?
Madam Chair, I just have a question here. So do we have two items, one with the bridge removal and one with the backfill? Is that?
And I was gonna go to the backfill after this.
Okay, is that one motion, or is that going to be two?
Nope. Well, yes. Well, I guess my opinion would be that we do one motion, because the change order is all one document with both of these items.
And so the backfill?
Item number two is backfill at the ends of these two bridges, which would be the approaches, and then on each side. In the bid was backfilling of existing material on the site. I guess we're exploring and looking into other options of this. We obviously know that this is a continuing problem. We've talked to the South Dakota Department of Transportation. MinDOT has a different detail and opinion of what should be in the backfill. Talked to some contractors to see what they think. We've come up with this item for now, which is a, it's a crushed quartzite material with a lot of what I call rock dust. Rock dust is extremely fine and extremely, and it packs very hard. I've worked with it prior. I think it's a very good material, way, way better than what native material would be. It just, it just seems like it's, that stuff settles a lot. And then we deal with complaints over and over again, and our department goes and patches over and over again. So we'd like to, we'd like to install this backfill on these bridges. This is a pretty major road, obviously, and I'm not gonna say it's gonna completely eliminate the bump. My opinion is, is that it's going to help it. I, like I said, if it works, if we get a contractor, if they compact it in their well, which we do testing and whatnot for it, if it performs well, it's something that we, as a department, would like to become more standard in our bridges. If it doesn't perform well, I guess we go back to square one and try again. But outside of putting approach slabs coming up to the bridges, which are typically in the eighty to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a bridge bid item, this could continue to be somewhat of a problem. But like I said, we're, we want to try some new backfill material to try to make it a lesser problem. And this is what we're proposing. And seventy-seven hundred dollars was the price for both structures, which would be four ends, if you want to call it that, for the material, and then one day of additional work, because we're asking them to excavate further back on the approach, to get more material in there to hopefully help our bump problem. So that's my, if you have any other questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve both these items on a single motion.
Second.
I do have a comment as well, which, the city of Sioux Falls seems to have a bump issue as well. And I've certainly gotten several comments from people about our bumps. So get those bumps out of here.
The DOT has the problem, too. It's a, it's an upper Midwest problem. I don't, I don't know. It's, freeze thaw in this area just wreaks havoc on that type of stuff.
Thanks.
Jason, with the change of date from September eighteen to October three, will there have to be a notification? Was there a notification put out to the public as to the completion date, expected completion date? And if there was, will we be?
Yes, if we, these bridges, I guess, Pram Construction has three contracts with Minnehaha County this summer. In my opinion, right now, I guess, I still don't see these bridges taking up to the original completion date. If we start to near that, we will definitely let, especially Eros, and we'll probably give them more of a heads up than anybody out there, because they're obviously the most affected with the number of employees they have. My opinion, I guess, right now is that it's still not gonna get close to the September twenty-eighth date. I still hope to see these open by September first, but they do have, they, you know, if it does go that far, we still are not gonna hold them obligated. But then I feel that they're going to be late on their other projects if this project goes out to that October third date.
Any other questions or comments? I have a motion to approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2014 agreement between Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls for detoxification services. Ken McFarland.
Good morning Commissioners. As you know, in years past, we've had the good fortune to have the city of Sioux Falls participate financially with this in the operation of the detox center. One of the things that was holding up the 2014 contract was, in fact, you know, the big change that we were undergoing with how we deliver detox services, and the restructuring that we've done between the sobering center slash infirmary concept and the detox, and then the, you know, some of the shift in numbers that we've seen. Well, I think we've got that all sorted out now. And so what we're bringing you is the 2014 contract for city participation in detox. And under the terms of this agreement, the city will pay a hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in 2014, in twelve equal monthly installments of thirteen thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. If you approve and sign off on the agreement, we will play catch-up with that, you know, from the beginning of the year until now. Just for your, just to realize the impact and what we're facing, and we have a ten-month contract with Armour for detox services in the amount of three hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars. We anticipate a full year in 2015 is gonna be approximately four hundred and ten thousand dollars. And that compares to what we had in, originally for detox services in the 2014 budget in the sheriff's department of seven hundred and fifty-one thousand. So as you can see, we had quite a shift there in dollars. So, this is one leg of the stool, and you'll hear about the other leg of the stool in a moment from Carol, when we do the state contract. But we do, we see both city and state funds for detox, and those dollars will be used to offset the cost of the program. And then, of course, we supply the other third of those dollars. So, with that, I would ask for your approval.
I'd make a motion to authorize the chair to sign that agreement with the city of Sioux Falls.
I have a motion and a second to sign the agreement. Any comments? Commissioner Bennigan?
Ken, can you tell me what's happened with daily attendance since the contract philosophy has changed?
And that our numbers, and Carol can probably augment this, but our numbers are far below what we were originally doing of, you know, we routinely, under the old system, ran sixteen per day, and were full, and that, at that amount. Some of our numbers today, I think even last week when I was checked, we were down to four, and that within the center itself, with some folks, of course, you know, we're, you know, we're heavily utilizing the sobering center concept. I can't answer today what's over there. Carol, can you tell me?
Typically between three and five.
So we've seen dramatic difference?
It has. It has.
Yay.
Yes.
No kidding.
I have a motion and a second to authorize signing of the contract between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County for detox services. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Ken.
Item sixteen, authorize chairman to sign the FY 2015 agreement between Minnehaha County and South Dakota Department of Social Services for clinically managed residential detoxification services. Carol Muller.
Good morning Commissioners. Carol Muller, Minnehaha County Human Services. Before you is the annual contract. We've received this for several years. It's an annual contract for reimbursement for the work that we do at Minnehaha County Residential Detox. And would be open to any questions that you have. Last year, the contract was for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. This year, the contract is for a hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars. And that new contract is effective June one, two thousand and fourteen, to May thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen.
Any questions for Carol? Commissioner Bennigan?
I don't have a question. I have a comment, because as we well know, we were significantly harassed and beat up on a regular basis with the old system. The new system has worked well, and not only that, is the state certification and the test scores have been awesome. Can you just tell us a little bit about what the recommendations and the results of that were, just briefly?
Sure, sure.
Don't give us the whole report.
A very short summary that's out there, yes. Well, as you know, Minnehaha County residential detox had issues with accreditation that were taking place. We are now back on track again with our regular three-year accreditation as of a couple months ago, with an excellent score of about ninety-seven percent. It was ninety-seven point something percent, I believe. So we're back in place with that, the new concept. We've changed it underneath the new vendors, so that we have a detox center for people who are transitioning and moving along, and are along that continuing of, continuum of seeking treatment. And the sobering center, where people just need to sober up and are gonna be in and out with that particular concept. It's a better use of resources that we have, and making sure that we get people the right resources at the right time is really important for us to be able to do. But no, I will tell you, it's interesting. That changed immediately up there. Typically, between three and five. I haven't heard the numbers today. Yesterday, when I was up there, they had four people, two were leaving, and I think they had three more coming in. And I also have been up there at times where they had zero. That typically doesn't last for very long. But on occasion, that actually has, has happened. So yes, we're back in play with everything, working very well.
Well, if I can follow up with those comments, I just think that this whole process, besides being pains-taking for quite a few months, your leadership and the leadership of your team that's behind you, and the sheriff's department, and everybody that's been involved in this process has done an excellent job of providing a system that works better. And frankly, the results are in the pudding, so to speak. And you and everybody else that has been involved, frankly, needs to hear more positive acclaim than what our experience has been. And I want you to know that the five of us or more up here appreciate those efforts.
Well, thank you.
Because it's made a big difference in not just the budgets, but in people's lives. And that's what's really.
And it continues to be a learning curve and some evolution with everything that goes along.
So heck of a job.
But great people. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. I would look for a motion.
I'd make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the agreement between the county and the state.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes three to zero.
Item seventeen, consider a motion to supplement sixteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars from the Emergency Food and Shelter Program Fund to the Emergency Food and Shelter Program budget representing the first half of the 2014 EFSP allocation. Carol Muller.
Good morning. Yes, Minnehaha County has been awarded, awarded three thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars under the Emergency Food and Shelter Program. We refer to that as EFSP in our office. And these funds are provided by federal government, and we're able to make use for them for gaps in our, gaps in our community. So we are in the process of doing that right now. We're using them a lot for filling the gaps for motels and affordable housing issues that are existing within our community. So this, we typically get this in two drop downs. We were hoping to be able to do it all in once, but as soon as the second half drops, we'll come back and do the same authorization again. So this would be for the first half of that thirty-three thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars.
Any questions for Carol? Entertained a motion?
So move. So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to...
I have a comment.
Commissioner Kelly.
I don't have a problem with this at all, but it's no wonder that we have a $17 trillion deficit in this country when this program started as a temporary program in 1980, or rather, 1980. And Lord knows how much money is in this program all across the United States. Obviously, there's nothing temporary in government that we just continue to spend and spend and spend.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
You know, I, it's a good point, Mr. Kelly, but there are those that believe that Medicaid funding would only last one year. Just point that out.
Do we have a motion in a moment?
Yes, we do.
We have a motion in a second to sign a supplement of $16,822 for Emergency Food and Shelter Program. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
When Commissioner Barr calls me Mr. Kelly, I know that I've got to get scolded.
Item number 18 is a briefing on the Coordinated Assessment for Reentry, CART program operated by the Minnehaha County Human Services Department. Brett Johnson.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Thanks for having me this morning. Just to give you a brief history, I am the program coordinator for Alliance through the Human Services Department. So, in order to clarify the difference between Alliance and CART, just wanted to give you a brief history. I've been at Human Services for about a year and a half. And if you remember, I came before you about a year ago in requesting an additional staff person for Alliance. So, to clarify the difference, when we went in and brought the Alliance program to the jail, we really wanted to create a, an intense case management program to provide services to individuals that might have mental health, significant medical, and/or substance abuse issues, along with unemployment and homeless issues. In the process of developing this program and meeting with the lieutenants, Warden Romer, and the social services staff in the jail, the medical and mental health staff, we really saw that there was a greater need for discharge planning for individuals in the jail, not only for providing case management through Alliance, but really to create a stronger program or a stronger reentry team. So, out of those conversations and what we really saw as needs, we created what we call Coordinated Assessment Reentry Team. That's CART. And since November, we've actually been meeting just with human services staff, detox staff, medical and mental health staff from the jail. And in that timeframe, we've really developed an understanding of the complex needs of the individuals that come and go out of jail. And they may or may not actually need case management services from the Alliance program, but they might already be connected to some other services in the community. It's just, when they're booked into the jail, they may not share that information, and while they're in jail, that information may not be known. So, what we're really doing is developing a stronger coordinated process to make sure that these individuals, upon being released from the jail, are actually getting connected to the services that they might already be connected to. We might be able to coordinate with those entities a little bit better. And at the same time, in the future, hope that we will get people connected to the right resources upon entering the jail so we know that we can start making some plans right when they come in so we can stop and reduce the recidivism for those individuals. Just to share a little bit about the, the entities that we do have involved, we're actually going to start these weekly meetings this Thursday morning. And along with Minnehaha County Human Services, we'll have, myself as a representative from Alliance, we'll have an emergency relief worker from our office at Human Services, we'll have detox, medical and mental health from the jail represented. We're also including Southeastern Behavioral Health Care from their case management program. We've got somebody from Evolve Counseling that's going to address the treatment needs of those, the Native American population. We've got somebody that will eventually be coming from Falls Community Health. We've got the Glory House and Carroll Institute representatives. We're at least trying to address the medical, mental health, substance abuse, housing and unemployment needs of those individuals. So, we're looking forward to moving forward this, with this project.
Any questions for Brett?
Brett, maybe two-thirds of our inmates have mental issues of one sort or another. You follow up afterwards, and of course, Alliance does the same thing. I guess you can't really separate these two, can you? But to get them, to get them into some sort of help, is that, is that where we're going with this thing?
Absolutely. What we're trying to do...
Whether it's meds or whether it was counseling or whatever.
Yes. What we're really trying to do is make sure that these individuals that are in the jail, and if they do have mental health issues, to address the specific population you're talking about, is to really get the right entity and the right person in the jail to meet with that individual, to get them connected to that appropriate service as soon as possible. What we've seen throughout the process of Alliance is that I will go in and meet with an individual and at some point assess that they actually need to be connected to Southeastern Behavioral or another mental health provider, and then at that point transition them to that provider. With CART and with this Coordinated Assessment Reentry Team, we'll be able to address that much sooner and make sure that the right entity is in the jail, meeting with that individual right up front. And it's a much more warm handoff. What we've found with individuals that do have significant mental health problems or medical or substance abuse is being able to limit the times they have to share their story and get reconnected to another provider. So, if we can get them connected to that provider much quicker in that process, the chances of them staying connected to that provider and getting those appropriate services will, will increase.
So, who, I mean, they can't afford to go out to Southeast. Did Medicare cover this? Does the county cover it? Did the VA get involved in this thing, or?
Where we're at with this right now, Commissioner Kelly, is that we, we're not, we're not seeking out any specific funding for any individual. When somebody, we look at each case individually. So, when somebody is being discharged or released from, from the jail, and we're getting them connected to the appropriate services, that service will certainly be the ones to determine what funding they have in place for the services that they do provide. So, it doesn't necessarily follow that individual, much like Medicare or Medicaid. But each, each case would certainly be handled different in order to provide the right funding and the right services to that individual.
Are you working with the VA a lot? I mean...
As it stands right now, we don't have the VA involved with this team, but we certainly coordinate with them in cases that we're aware of, somebody that's in jail that is, that is a veteran.
Any other questions for Brett?
Just had a comment. There was a 60 Minutes program on Sunday, and I only caught the tail end of it, but it was on mental illness and them, mental illness people revolving through the jail system, and they were, I think specifically talking, well, nationwide, but Cook County and Chicago, and how high the population is there. Because of the closing of our mental institutions, if that's what you want to call it, those people have gone from one place where they were supposedly getting care and dumped into a jail system where they are not necessarily always getting care. And so, thank you for what you're doing for their service, and I, I think people need to be aware of what has happened to this population of people that needs help.
Yeah. Well, that's great news, and I certainly want to make sure that we, we're very thankful for what Sheriff Milstead and what Warden Romer have allowed us to do in terms of working collaboratively, collaboratively with them and giving us access to the jail so we can work on getting those individuals connected to the services in the community in hopes that we will stop that revolving door.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Carol?
The one thing that's really important to this is the communication.
Carol, talk, please.
Is the communication, because sometimes people will say, well, why didn't they talk here? Why didn't they talk there? We've got them at the table, and that's pretty rare to have happen. But we've got everybody at the table. We had to do agreements, agreements, agreements between everything because of confidentiality and HIPAA and those type of things. We had to work through them. But again, why can't we all communicate? That's what's happening with CART.
Yep. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Item number 19 is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports?
I'll just give you a brief one. I was in Philadelphia this last week with Annie Casey Foundation along with Ken and Jamie Gravitt from the JDC. And there were also, there was about 17 people from the state of South Dakota that was there for the national convention. We were looking at addressing, learning about child, juvenile detention issues and how to solve the high numbers of population that have been locked up and try to put the right kid in the right place at the right time. It was a wonderful conference, as always. Annie Casey basically foots the bill for this. Minnehaha County was responsible only for two airline tickets, which were paid for out of their respective budgets. So, it wasn't a hit on the county as financially, but they gave back to this community in many, many ways with a lot of educational opportunities, which are too numerous to tell you about at this point. And I hope to go back through my notes and just kind of go back through everything that I learned in those few days of convention. I think it was well worth the time away, so. Any other liaison reports? That, is there any new business? Under old business? Um, I think we have a couple. I was going to ask Auditor Litz on behalf of the commission if you would give us an update on what's happening with the Millage voting issue that we had about a week ago.
I came up here, Bob Litz with the auditor's office. And I came up here in anticipation of this, but first things first.
Cookies?
I thought you were going to give it to me. I'm the one suffering from a cold.
I was hoping Jeff would share that, but...
I thought he was like Boehner. I thought he'd start crying.
Bob Litz with the auditor's office, end up. You know, I, I went back yesterday and reviewed the commission meeting last Tuesday. And the chain of events that led up to that was Monday before the election, about 10 o'clock, I think it was, I was summoned to the window downstairs, and it was Mr. Millage with his concerns about the precinct issue. And I, I explained to him that we were very busy, and I was left with the impression that he was okay with me working on it because I explained to him that I want to talk to the Secretary of State and Kirsten Katmeyer and review the process. He, he seemed okay with that, but apparently decided to change his mind on that later. What, what I did subsequently was I went and, and this was news to me at this point, at Monday morning, when, when he brought it up. What I've done subsequently is I've tried to trace the chain of events that put that on the map, and right now, it seems a little bit hazy. Mr. Katmeyer and myself have had some pretty good talks, and what it, what it cooks down to is the state law that was put out when, when the state did their, their, or the census, redistricting. And there's a date when they accepted the redistricting as opposed to when the place was annexed into the city. And if he falls on that timeline, if I'm, you can correct me if I'm not getting this right, fell in that timeline, the legislative district would have precedence over anything that we did on the precincts. Now, I'm not quite done with my investigation of this here, and I'm also investigating the process of how this gets down there and, and why I was not privy to this going on the map before it happened. It's an unfortunate circumstance. I regret it. The timing couldn't have been worse for Mr. Millage to move into that development. I know that right now, there's six houses in there, and they have plans for selling a lot more, so it's going to be something to deal with. But, you know, as I look at it, Mr. Millage certainly has a concern that I view as valid. Just looking at it, common sense would tell you that, but I was not ready to concede that at that time without investigating it. Looking forward to, I also have to figure out which precinct that that property is going to go into. He wants it to go into Memorial, I believe, is what he said, but I'm not certain I can do that either. So, the answer that I want to give you today is I'm not quite done to, to tell you exactly what we're going to do.
Did he vote?
Yes, he did vote.
Okay. Commissioner Barr?
Auditor Bob, you know, what happened there is that little bit of land out in District 11 was moved by you into District 9 in violation of the state statute, which was, took effect in April 1st of 2010. And, you know, if, if that was alone the issue, that would be certainly a problem. But in my view, this whole election has many issues which might lead our result to be tainted. Certainly, I believe that your count was correct. But if you have the example of a husband and wife being forced to vote in different precincts, well, some of those races for precinct committeemen are extremely close. June Staggers lost to Elizabeth Larkin 37 to 35. A single person coming across would make a big difference in that race. So, you know, as we have, in the, in the city election, we had the absentee issue with Rebecca Dunn. We had voter confusion over vote anywhere. We had a wrong ballot given to someone in the, in the T area school vote. We had elderly folks didn't know where to go. We had so many changes. There was no voting location in the Walmart area. People without cars were going to have greater problem. But then we look at our primary election here, and we have, again, that husband and wife issue. We have people that were not offered immediately the Democratic ballot, were just handed the nonpartisan ballot. The changes in precinct locations, the discouraged voting. I just talked to a woman yesterday who went to vote, and she wasn't on the list. So, she didn't have time, she didn't vote. Her mother went to vote. She wasn't on the list. She didn't vote. Our legislative boundary change, like I said, hundreds of calls to your, to your office. I talked to one supervisor, I had emails with one voting supervisor, and she said that she had half a dozen cases where one spouse was told to vote in one location and the other in another. And it's possible that, you know, the, the line between precincts goes between the front bedroom and the back bedroom, but I doubt it. You know, the number of calls, they had 191 votes at that precinct, and she said she had to call about 25 of them. You know, this was a low turnout election. This was, you know, very few people voted. What the heck is going to happen when we go to November and all of this stuff hits the fan? You've already violated the law. You've already confused half the people. What's going to happen, Bob?
I violated the law by this, this district thing? It was done by staff unbeknownst to me at the time, sir.
Okay, who's in charge?
Well, I'm in charge.
Oh, wait, it's your staff that's doing this?
Well, you know, it showed up there, and I said, Monday morning was the first time I saw it. If I'm guilty of that, then be so.
This is your fourth year of being in this job. Shouldn't you be pretty darn good at it now?
Well, I would, I would submit to you, Commissioner, that every day I learn something new, as do you.
Me too, yeah.
You know, I, I, the allegations that I'm, you know, involved in criminal activity, that's upsetting to me.
That, well, that should be upsetting to you. You, of course, accuse Rebecca Dunn of criminal activity.
Well, these are allegations made by you, okay?
I just know that the law was broken when we changed those people to vote in a different legislative district. Those borders are set by the legislature, not by our auditor's office.
Are there any other questions on the subject or comments? Any other old business?
I'd like to bring up one thing. Ms. Daley was down here, you know, advocating the, sending out of voter cards informing people. If you want to do that, we have 118,000 registered voters, about 109,000 of them are active and 9,000 aren't. It would cost you about $38,350 per election.
Commissioner Kelly?
Just a thought, Bob. Have you ever thought about setting up a, a hotline from the precinct workers to someone sitting down in your office or maybe two people that if there's a question, it can be answered immediately by one person and...
Yes, Mr. Kelly, and we have full staff on that day, and everybody is answering questions. And we do have a separate elections line that was lit up pretty good. You know, the, the, the problem here, besides the, the confusion about some people get to vote everywhere, people thinking they get to vote everywhere, honestly, was the data that we got in the poll. Smaller counties, and I would also tell you that this was prevalent across the state this time, where we're not just the only ones. We're the biggest ones and the ones that get focused on here. You know, the, the thing that I have ordered since then is we are doing a complete audit of all 118,000-plus registered voters in Minnehaha County. We're going to go through each one of them. You know, it irks me too. It's very embarrassing to me too that when I get things back from a database that they are skewed, there's things that are missing on it, and, you know, I get accused of... of intentionally doing those things, and it's simply not the truth. I, I bet if anybody else was in my shoes right now, they'd be sitting there with the same problem. Just, I just don't know what the fix is, except to do what I'm doing, and that's clean off our side of the street. I've got a hard copy of things the way they were right after the election, and I'm going to do a hard copy of things right after we're done doing that. And I'm also going to find somebody that's going to come into our system and, from the state's end down, and look for viruses or some kind of a computer malfunction. Outside of that, folks, I'm afraid I don't know what to do. There's some things in this world that are out of my control. And try as I might, I'm merely an auditor in Minnehaha County, Jeff. That's it.
This last week, there was a story on Kelloland, and I was actually called to do an interview on that, and I was out of town at the time, and two of the other Commissioners were interviewed for that story. And I guess I, I thought, you know, Kellow should have called the Auditor and asked him instead of asking the Commission all these questions. General elections are extremely complex, and to expect that we can just go to polling centers right off the bat, that was obviously a concern, and it's getting dumped on us. I think at this point, you know, I guess I'm speaking Commissioners without asking their permission, but I think that we lack the confidence in the Auditor's Office right now to pull off an election with general polling sites, and until we see some type of a written proposal and how this would run. Because when you have Minnehaha County, Lincoln County, the city, a ton of different races, different precincts, different legislative races, that would mean that there would have to be every one of those ballots in every place, so that somebody in Baltic can go over and vote down on South Sioux Falls, or, or somebody in Lincoln County can't go to Brandon and vote. And so, there isn't more confusion, and so, it feel like it's getting dumped back on the Commission, that we're saying, no, we're not going to go to polling places, when we're trying to save the integrity of the elections without them falling apart. I would love to see polling centers at some point. I have to vote in Baltic. That's probably, I live closer to three other precincts than I do Baltic, but I go to Baltic, and I work in Sioux Falls. So, it is, I know it's a hardship for a lot of people, and voting centers would be wonderful. But at this point, I don't think the Commission has the confidence that we should be changing the boundaries for polling centers for general elections, because we're afraid of a disaster.
Well, Commissioner, I think that for you to lay the blame all at the feet of the Auditor's Office downstairs is, is not entirely correct. I would accept some of that responsibility, but there's a lot of moving parts in here, and there's a lot of other people that I have to depend on to do an election. And like I said, I'm not in charge of the Secretary of State's office. I can't help if there's a human factor out there with a, an election worker that makes a mistake due to the end of a long day. When, when we send out the voter cards to tell people where they go, that data has to line up with the post offices and the listed data system, or else that card doesn't go out. I, I can't, I can't control the post office and how they operate. Somehow, that total vote has to get in queue with the post office as well for all this mail to work. There's a number of factors, and, you know, the 2012 election went pretty good, and it was right after that when we migrated our data up. Our data was the same then, that we migrated up, and somehow, it's come back, and it's, I'm to blame for that data coming back messed up. I mean, I, I guess I accept that responsibility, but at this point here, I think I'm kind of helpless to do anything about it, other than what I'm doing.
And I, I think that's what the concern is, is that the Commission doesn't want to move to something else until we're ready to move to that, because there are way too many moving parts, and we don't want to see more problems than the few problems that we've had. That, and I feel like it's coming back on the Commission, and we're getting blamed, because why won't you guys go to the polling centers? Because we're not ready. That's the whole point.
Anybody else? Commissioner Bennigan?
Well, I think it's, you know, everybody can go back in hindsight and say, what should have been done differently? And I think the process now needs to be about evaluating that, but more importantly, getting the interested parties together as a group, including the city and the school districts, and certainly the state, who has responsibility ultimately for the whole works, to get everybody together in some conversations about looking for ways to improve the system, because if the system's got some syntax errors. We definitely need to evaluate the whole process itself, and frankly, I'm not interested in pointing fingers. I want to know where the issues are and what, frankly, the solutions are. And the only way we're going to get solutions is to get all the interested parties together, so that the next outcome is a better outcome, because frankly, that's the most important part of the process, not whether it's a political issue or a, you know, I've never seen anybody solve a problem by pointing fingers at each other. It just never works that way. And if that's our modus operandi, then frankly, we need to be looking at something different. But the other issue is, I think part of the problem is, is that I don't think people understand how complicated the process is with multiple school districts in the city, multiple counties in the city, state, the Secretary of State's reports being changed by our staff one day, and then the next morning, you check on that, and it's back to the old system. There's just way too many issues that need to be addressed or bullet points that we've got to, to, to solve, and I think that that ought to be the results that we're looking for.
I agree with you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Burr?
Well, I think, Gerald, you bring up some good points there, and I think that the solutions are probably out there. I know that this isn't the first time an area has been annexed into the city, and, you know, that problem's been solved in, in other, other years. The same thing in Rapid City, you know, Aberdeen, Yankton, whatever. And so, those folks have been able to, I believe, solve those, that issue, and I think we can solve it going forward, but it didn't look very good this particular election.
We've probably done five or six annexations, and they're fairly innocuous, because they clearly fall within the borders. And like I say, Monday was the first time I became aware of this, and if I could have fixed it then, I would have done it. But I thought it, it, or a full investigation of what was going on. I can't, just because Mr. Milage wants something, I, I might agree with him on the surface of it, but I feel an obligation to the election system to go fully investigate it and find out if indeed that is the case. I know state law trumps our precincts. I know those legislative districts do. I was here in the beginning when we did those, when that law came down from the legislature and helped implement that into the county precincts.
Any other old business? Seeing none, we will adjourn into executive section for contract negotiations and personnel.
That's my motion.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Yes, it's been a...